Hold the order, roll call please.
Rachel Babson, yes.
Yeah.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item this morning, we're gonna ask Andrew Bremseth to give us an update.
All right, we need to tighten that. Good morning, your honor members. Just real quickly, in the event that we run long, I wanted to just make a quick announcement. Yesterday was the deadline for those interested in the vacancy in Ward Three. And we received two applications for that seat, one from Nate Cundy and one from Mike Mortensen. And because we only have two applicants, I was just gonna suggest that instead of meeting at four o'clock on Monday, we'll meet at four thirty on Monday. I don't think we'll need as much time with two candidates compared to the six that we've had the last couple of times this process took place. So we'll be at four thirty here on Monday. We'll put together probably four or five questions for each candidate to respond to, and then the council will be asked to deliberate and discuss and make their decision. We will probably share most of the questions with the candidates ahead of time. There may be one or two. I don't have any thoughts on what they are. I haven't even thought about developing questions yet. But just have a couple that maybe we ask them to think on the fly, just so you can kind of see, you know, the real-time reaction. Then, just for a process standpoint, the meeting of the council will be called the order at five thirty. You'll approve the agenda. And then the first topic on the agenda will be related to filling this vacancy. So if there is a candidate that receives a successful resolution from the council, they would then be seated right away at the meeting and carry out the business. So I also will say, we have a decent agenda on Monday night, followed by a closed session, discuss the real estate piece, and then the Port Authority will meet after that. So I'm just giving you all a fair warning that Monday night could be longer than usual, starting at four thirty and then additional two sessions after the regular council.
Should we get something?
You guys get us out of here on time. We don't have to worry about that. So anyway, that's all I wanted to mention, your honor, that those things are unfolding, and four thirty is probably more appropriate than four based on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, Al. Now, is the vote, now how does the voting work for that?
While you guys are in control of that, what I suggest, but you guys can do what you want, is during that work session, discuss, you know, poll consensus bill. And then when the council meeting begins, there'll have to be a resolution that's offered for, to appoint one candidate, and they'll need five votes to have a successful resolution.
Is that, is it like a weighted vote, or is it just a straight-out vote?
You need five votes.
You mentioned there's a Port Authority meeting following, and just so that it's clear, is that also a closed meeting, or is that open to the public?
My understanding is everything will be open to the public.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. The first item this morning is an overview of an upcoming bond sale. We'll call on our city finance director, Bill Somer. Good morning, Bill.
Morning. Thank you, your honor, council. No action this morning, but wanted to go through the upcoming bond issue that will be before you on Monday night, the seventeenth. Doug Green, our consultant from Baker Tilly, will be here in person that night. So he is working out of Texas this week, but will be here Monday night. But wanted to give you a heads up, so you know what we're coming into on Monday. So this is a twenty twenty-four, series twenty twenty-four A bonds. And the bonds will be used to finance the Aquatic Center, the De Lagoon Park improvements, and then two street projects. The one that's going over on Summit Linden Laurel area and Stanton Avenue. So we talked about this, you know, probably a year ago, and saying, okay, we will be issuing bonds when we're rolling with the projects. We needed to wait, of course, till De Lagoon, till we had a project, and it wasn't that long ago that you approved those bids. So as soon as those bids were approved, we start putting the finance package together, and we're here today with that package. So we're looking at a power amount of the bonds in total of sixteen million eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, made up of two portions of that. The fifteen thousand six seventy-five for the sales tax-supported portion. If you remember, the voters of Fergus Falls and the Minnesota Legislature approved a sales tax for the city of Fergus Falls to collect through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-seven. This is a half percent sales tax, and it went into effect last October, so October first of twenty twenty-three. So we've already been collecting those sales tax, runs fourteen and a quarter years. So that's gonna support that section of it. And then the improvement portion, that one million one hundred ninety-five thousand, will be paid back by special assessments to the benefit of properties within those two projects, as well as a property tax levy. You can see we have deposit to the construction fund, and then our various bond issuance costs that go along with that. Now, we, like I said, we've been collecting sales tax since October first. So we're applying, at this point, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of cash on hand towards the project, so we're not gonna bond for cash we have in the bank. And also, we have collected some special assessment payments already. So on the Summit Linden Laurel, that was the first one that was, the payments were due, correct, Brian, before we built last year? So we have about a hundred and eighty-some thousand that we've collected on that, again, applying that to the project. So we're not bonding for money we have on hand for these two projects. Because the sales tax portion, we were allowed to use sales tax for a bond up to ten point eight million dollars on the Aquatic Center and five point two for the De Lagoon Park project. Okay, so the debt service schedule here for the sales tax portion, you can see principal interest, we're going out through February first of two thousand thirty-eight. And the reason bonds are structured that way is you get all your collections in for the prior year through December thirty-first. And of course, there is about a three-month lag when the final, you know, December comes in, January, February, March, beginning of March, we get the December sales. So that's why they set that just after the end of the year. You do that with tax levy funds as well. We'll see that on the improvement portion. So you're collecting that full year's worth of taxes, special assessments, sales tax, use that to make your principal and interest payments. So you can see total principal and interest of one point five to one point six million. The last full year of collection, we had been collecting that amount. At that time, each year that we had the sales tax on, you know, during the community arena, we were paying that off during the library, we saw increases in local option sales tax collections each year. So part of that, within that timeframe also, just as a reminder, the law went into effect that local option sales taxes are collected on online sales as well that are shipped into Fergus Falls. So that, you know, made a, made a big change in that. The improvement portion, we call that the PIR portion, Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund. We're running this through that same term, so, so everything matches, because this is one bond issue, but we'll be separating it internally with the various funding sources. You can see we're, we're sending this also around the assessments that are coming in. Little bit less at the end, because we've had prepayments upfront. Some people have paid their assessments off right away when they got the bill. They came in and just paid the balance off. So all this ending there on two-one of thirty-eight. The levy required now for this is the far-right column. It's based on a hundred and five percent of the debt service. You do that so that you are levying a bit more than the debt service in case you have some non-payment of taxes, some delinquent, delinquencies. So once we do that for a few years, you start having a bit of a cash balance, then I look at probably dialing that down a little bit more to the principal and interest if we have that little bit of reserve. But we'll start out at that hundred and five percent levy, or eighty-eight thousand seven sixty-four is what it's estimated at. And you can see that's pretty stable over the life of these bonds. Interest rates from back in twenty sixteen, Doug was just providing this to us to see where we're at. We are, you know, certainly a bit higher than, than we have historically been. I mean, we went through many, many years of historically low rates. Let's see, do we have on this one? You can kind of see the coupon rate there over the life of the bonds. And Doug will go through all this again on Monday night as well, kind of dialing all that in for us. So the timeline, so June seventeenth, we are gonna ask you as the city council to approve a bond sale. So getting this all out for a sale, we'll have a rating call with Moody's Investor Service on the twentieth. I take care of that, and Clara often will sit in with me as well, if that works for her. Because we, we talk about our city financial condition. They already have our audit report that you approved at the last meeting. We sent that off. So they have our most recent financial statements, and we go through various projects, you know, that we're seeing in the community. Kind of give them an overview of Fergus Falls and our, our credit. We have a good credit rating. Fergus Falls is rated, rated well, so. And that is the slides at this point. So any questions here today? Otherwise, like I said, Doug Green will be here in person to talk to you, probably in a little bit more depth, and of course, this is his expertise. But I wanted to give you a heads up today, so you know what's coming, where we're going. Again, we're looking at closing on these bonds, getting the proceeds in the beginning of August. I've told them, you know, any way we can expedite that, because all these projects are well underway, we're writing checks, you know, every council meeting to pay for them. We need to get the money in the door. It's, it's time to get the bonds issued now and get all that, get all that settled, so.
Thanks, Bill. Like you said, Doug will be here Monday night. Jim, go ahead.
Any idea what, what the interest rates are now?
What's here is what we're seeing, and let me, the true interest rate estimated at this point, four point oh eight is what, that's when you factor in all the issuance costs, any estimated premium that, you know, the purchaser would be paying, so we're around four.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Yeah, again, professionals always appreciate the information. We look forward to Doug, Doug's present, presentation on Monday night.
Yep.
For action. Thank you, Bill. All right, moving along, scenic drive internet, infrastructure projects. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvora. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, your honor, and council members. Yes, just want to give you a little background. The, yes, the preliminary engineering report that was a hundred percent petitioned that worked this PER for the scenic drive infrastructure project is completed. A portion of this public improvement project is proposed to be special assessed per city policy, following statute, this is statute court twenty-nine. The proposed amount funded by special assessments consists of portions of the twelve-inch water main, eight-inch sanitary sewer main, and six-inch sewer service improvements that plus benefiting properties. In general, from an engineering standpoint, these, these projects are feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to complete the underground infrastructure improvements in the immediate area. So at this time, I'm just gonna refer up to the location map here, just to give you a little background of what we're referring to. So, thank you. This is the, the project limits here right now. Just want to point out, Pebble Short Drive is a road that lets scenic drive, scenic drive is the improvement area here, goes all the way down to Pebble Hills Drive here on this location. So currently, scenic drive is a ground road. It has currently served all along the south end, from this end here, going to north up here to the sanitary sewer. Where then we cross and goes across the field into the sanitary sewer location. Currently, there's a twelve-inch water main that comes up to this sole property, our one house right now. So under this improvement, this P E R, we have it laid out into three options. Option number one would be an extension of the twelve-inch water main passed to the seven lots right here that was part of the original petition. And third, the second option is farther extending the twelve-inch water main to the south where it meets Pebble Hills Drive. A third option, we've had a little interest based on the sanitary sewer, how it does serve this entire property. However, there's about four lots up here on the north side of my map right here that currently do not have sort of service. Therefore, we added this third option is to complete this, these are a gap area in the sanitary sewers. That's referred to as the third option for this improvement. So of those three options here, I just want to go through the costs. I just want to note on the water main, we're proposing to construct that in the green space, the ditch space, not beneath the road. There will be no water services with this. Water services could be installed as development occurs. So on the cost summary, on the option number one, we have a grand total estimated amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The assessable cost would be about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Under option two, that's a further extension, that total, grand total cost of two hundred and seven thousand dollars, assessable cost is a hundred and forty-three thousand. And thirdly, under option number three, the eight-inch sanitary sewer, we're projecting grand total cost of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Of that, the assessable cost is a hundred and eighteen thousand to the benefiting properties. So based on our methodology, I mentioned this is a twelve-inch water main. However, per our city policy, residents would be charged an equivalent six-inch diameter water. So given this, based on our methodology, we're estimating under option one, yields an estimated amount of ninety-one hundred dollars per unit, six-inch water main under, under option number one. Just no, no water services included at this time. Under option two, we have a similar amount. We're estimating about eighty-eight hundred dollars per unit, six-inch water main. Under option three, we have estimated costs of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars for the sanitary sewer main to benefiting properties, and approximately twenty-nine hundred per unit sewer service. So given all the information and facts that we had, under the P E R, we're recommending that option number one, the twelve-inch water main in the middle of the projects. And then option number three, the eight-inch sanitary constructed from two hundred feet south to six hundred and sixty feet south of Pebble Short Drive. We're not recommending option number two at this time, just based on costs and everything, and as development occurs, we could proceed with that in the future. So we're just trying to address the immediate needs as per the petition project and some of those sanitary sewer items. So at this time, is what I'm requesting is accept the preliminary engineering report for P I number eight-two-three-one and seven-two-two-four. And then also initiate P I number seven-two-two-four, the sanitary sewer on scenic drive, from two hundred feet south to six hundred and sixty feet, sixty feet south Pebble Short Drive. And also set the preliminary improvement hearing date for public improvement seven-two-two-four and eight-two-three-one for August fifth, twenty twenty-four. And at this time, I'll open up any questions.
Thanks, Brian. Something like to make that motion?
I will, I will.
Offer the motion?
I'll make the motion, yes.
Thanks, Jim.
One second.
Second, okay. Uh, question, I have a question for you, Brian. So, do I understand right, like, option one is the base option? So option three is on top, above and beyond option one, correct? Like for those four additional units?
Yes, yes.
So the two hundred and thirty-five thousand is kind of, that's to, that's to get the twelve-inch line for the properties in yellow up on the screen, correct?
No, the opposite.
The, that sewer on number three is sewer main.
It's, it's yellow line, if I can. So you have a solid line. I can't quite reach up there. It's kind of in the yellow, a yellow line. You can see the four empty lots.
Yeah.
Undeveloped lots right there. They have water service.
Got it, okay.
And we got a lot of interest in completing that gap.
Okay, got it. Got it. Okay, thanks.
Just clarity too, option number one, it's a solid blue line, and then option number three is the fiction of a dash.
Got it. Thanks, Brian. Question, Jim?
Not a question, but a comment on the option number three, that sewer line. We have people right now that want to build, but are unable to because there's no sewer there. So I, I think option number three is a good thing.
Thanks, Jim. And then option two can be added, as you mentioned, as development occurs?
Correct.
That'll just be added.
Correct. And I, I just want to note too, under these, based on current ownership of these properties and past practices to occurs development, I'm recommending all of these, if we proceed to the final cost hearing, that the recommendation will be deferring basically non-active costs. So the city will be able, by deferring the costs as development occurs, these, these deferred assessments will be activated at the time during development, so.
Thanks, Brian. All right, yeah, Scott.
The twelve-inch line, and you said that they'll only be assessed for six-inch line, so this was apparently built with a twelve-inch line with something in mind. Why was it built initially with a twelve-inch line?
Twelve-inch line is for the, obviously, the flows and everything, but for increased future development as we go farther to the east and everything. So doing a little bit of comprehensive planning and everything, just due to hydraulics, twelve-inch line, that can help further serve, serve development. As we continue, as noted, we have unplatted property on the right hand of the screen. Hopefully, we, if we're lucky, we could start seeing more developments, and that's what you had mentioned about twelve-inch lines.
That's what I expected. I thought, who knows, there could have been some other reason, but thank you.
Scenic Drive on the north side, that's not in city limits, correct? On the north side of that road?
It is.
It is.
It is. Or is it?
It is, unplatted, yes.
Okay, but it's not platted and, okay. I didn't, I didn't think it was in city limits.
There are some portions of that parcel that aren't, but immediately adjacent to the road it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to bring the recommendation of option one and three to the council for discussion on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Now we'll move along to Frontier Drive Stormwater, Stormwater Analysis Project. Again, Brian, you are.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Frontier Drive in Western Avenue area, and it located northwest portion of the city. Currently drains about five hundred acre watershed through its existing city-owned network of storm sewer pipes and some ponds. This storm water collected discharges into I ninety-four right away, then flows downstream into a large culvert beneath Trump Highway two-ten, south of Walmart, and eventually drains into the Otter Tail River. In the past, we've had, I wouldn't say concerns this area, but we are at some capacity issues in some ponds. And recent, back in twenty twenty, MINDOT approached me indicating that the city may be exceeding our CFS cubic flow rating into MINDOT right away. So we said we would look into that project. So we, I worked with Bolt and Make, and we located an NPC SWC grant. The purpose of this project will help us identify sources of storm water currently contributing to this, these drainage concerns that not only I have, but some of this MINDOT as well. And then we'll develop some drainage improvement areas and solutions, especially for development as we figure is gonna continue. As you know, Frontier Ventures recently created some large sheds up there as well. We do have storm water control features as well, but kind of looking for an overall plan for that whole area. So, so I, like I mentioned, we secured a grant that's included in your packet. I'm estimating the total project cost of this analysis is about sixty-one thousand seven hundred. This includes some of the professional services of Bolt Make and some of my city staff time. The, the grant share that's included is fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars, which is a contribution of eighty-six percent. Therefore, the local share would be eight thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars, which is fourteen percent. And I'm proposing that the local share come through our Storm Sewer Enterprise Fund. So is what I'm requesting is to initiate public improvement seven-two-two-five, the Northwest Area Stormwater Analysis Project. Accept the MPCA's grant in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars, and to accept Bolt Make's professional service agreement for storm water analysis in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Now, open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. We can move this to the council through a motion?
I'll make that motion, and then I got a question.
Yeah, thanks.
Will this?
Hold on, let's get a second. Go ahead, Tom. Okay, thanks, Anthony.
Will, will this take into account, obviously, because MINDOT are going to obviously reconfigure this entire junction? So will this kind of study take into account all of that work? Because it's obviously gonna change the flows.
Because we're, we're, under this study, we're looking what's on the city's property.
Right.
It's encompassing the Big Wood Events Center all the way to the former Target, up to Pioneer Road area, up to Frontier. That whole northwest quadrant city limits is what we're kind of looking at.
Right.
And what is coming down.
But, and then, but that water will cross.
Correct.
It will still cross them, so.
Correct. So it'll give us enough information in both MINDOT too, so we are permitted, I think it was at forty-one CFS, don't quote me on that, nineteen seventy-eight. But in the case, MINDOT is very interested too, so if we have to come back to the table and maybe get re-permitted or what, and see what improvements to the facilities we do, because development will occur. So we need to know how to address that in the future as well, and with MINDOT, of course.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Brian? We have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we'll have a cannabis zoning ordinance update from our chief of police, Kyle Bergeren. And maybe just to set the stage a little bit, we're gonna listen to the chief tonight, council, or I'm sorry, this morning, council have an opportunity.
It's not gonna go that long.
That's right. Have an opportunity to answer any questions. We're not gonna have any public comment at this time. We'll have that on Monday night, and then the council can make their decision at that time. So this morning's gonna be an update from the chief, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, your honor.
Good morning.
I'd kind of echo your statement there, too. So four things I'll, I'll address. It's gonna be a little lengthy, but, you know, one thing I was asked to address is kind of the background of the process of how we got to where we are with our recommendation. The second thing I was asked to do was address some of the questions that were asked at the council meeting and provide some rebuttal to some of those topics. I was also asked to provide you, the council, with another option for the zoning ordinance that more closely mirrored what the planning commission's recommendations were. And the last thing I'll do is I'll just give you maybe a final alternative moving forward for, for next Monday night, so. So I will hopefully get to all of your questions here. But we started this, I guess, the process on how we got here, I think it's fair to say that it really started last fall. We, as the city, were getting a lot of inquiries about people coming to town and starting, or potentially starting cannabis businesses. There was a lot of interest at, on the west end at that time, and you as a council, I, I came to you as a council, asked for a moratorium to be put in place. You agreed to that. The other thing that we talked about is forming a committee. And I think just after the first of the year, the mayor appointed several members of the council, as well as himself, to form this kind of cannabis working room. And I've tried to be nothing more than a facilitator during this process, and I believe we started working in January. We've been before you as a council at a work session. We've been before you as a council during a regular council meeting. We've been before the planning commission. So there's been a number of public times that we have brought our progress, what we've discussed forward, looked from insight from you as a council, gone back to either the planning commission or to the work group, and that's, you know, the, the total culmination of how we got to the zoning ordinance that was, was offered as a first reading at the last council meeting. Just some comments, and I'll just say that today my comments really aren't meant to try to sway you one way or the other. It's really just to kind of identify the fact that this is a highly polarized topic, and I don't think anything that one side's gonna say is gonna convince the other or vice versa. I think more so it's just to kind of clarify some of the things that were said, and just to kind of, you know, make that point that there's no decision that you're going to make, that this community is a hundred percent behind or against. What I've been trying to do throughout this process is get us from this extreme on one end or the other to somewhere in the middle that's more of a community norm or a community standard that. I think the planning commission kind of said, nobody loved their recommendation, but they could live with the recommendation. And I think that's what you're gonna find when recommendation. And I think that's what you're going to find when you go through this process, that no one's going to be a hundred percent happy, but at the end of the day, Monday, you're going to have to make a decision on one of these two options. I'll just, from the hemp edible businesses that we have in town, I'll just say that, you know, it's kind of portrayed that things have been running smoothly. I'll just tell you from my perspective, we have had more complaints in the one year that they've been operational than we've had in five years of every alcohol establishment in town. And I think you, as council, are aware of that as well, because many times you have called me with complaints that you've received from the community. There was a comment about the four-twenty festival, you know, being a positive thing. I can tell you that we at the police department and at City Hall received calls from the public that did not feel it was a positive thing. I think one person, I don't follow social media, but might have even called me the Antichrist for allowing something like that to happen in our community. So again, I just think it kind of shows how divided of a community we are on this topic, and again, just trying to find common ground. And I'll just say, I've been called worse.
Especially on the ice.
Yeah, I'm not offended. I think one thing, there definitely is some public safety issues. You know, we've talked, you know, when it comes to full cannabis, you know, robbery, impaired driving, you know, when you have stores that are open, late hours, disturbances, there are some issues that are truly public safety issues. I think both sides have kind of misused the word public safety, like they've thrown public safety out there. And I think, to be fair, I think the real issue is trying to find that community standard that's acceptable. So sometimes I think terms are being misused or misunderstood, but I think ultimately the goal is, from both sides, what is that community standard? So I think that was just a point of clarification. And then the last thing, there was a question regarding the liquor store and hemp-infused beverages. So as a committee, there's been a lot of private bars in town that have wanted to sell hemp-infused beverages. The liquor store manager has approached the city for some time wanting to sell hemp-infused beverages. Right now, under the moratorium and the ordinance that we currently have, it was okay for the liquor store to sell hemp-infused beverages. And as a work group, I think the decision was made moving forward that we would allow bars also to sell hemp-infused beverages. But just the mechanics of lifting the moratorium, getting another ordinance in place, I think the committee felt it was best that that happened January first, also around the same time that we start renewing liquor licenses. So there was some thought that went into that. And again, it isn't just our municipal liquor store. It was a number of liquor establishments within our community that had made that request. Let's see. I think this was sent out to you in a, I don't remember if this was in the packet or the email. This is the Minnesota State Statute 342.13 that talks about local control. And that's really the foundation, you know, this was mentioned Monday night as well. This is really the foundation of what our powers as a city are, what we have to do by state law and what we can do by state law. So again, and it really does take into account both sides of the equation. In the first part, it states that we, as a city, cannot prohibit the sale of cannabis in our community. There's another provision in here that talks about because we're a city of over twelve thousand five hundred, we have to allow the sale of cannabis. So, again, it isn't, you know, for those people that are opposed to it, it isn't, again, that we're, you know, just doing this because we want to do this. The state has passed the law requiring our city, and we have to come into compliance with that. The second part of this talks about what restrictions we, as a city, can do. And one of those restrictions is zoning, and that's what we've been discussing. And I think that's where we started. Our discussion was with the B3 downtown zone. That was the starting point. As you read through this statute, one of the things that it allows for is a city to put in buffers five hundred feet from a park, residential treatment center, daycare facility, and a thousand feet from schools. Well, when we looked at the downtown zone, you have the new splash pad right downtown. So if you go five hundred feet from that, that pretty much takes out most of downtown. You have a residential treatment facility on North Union Avenue. You go five hundred feet from that, that takes out a good portion of downtown. You have a daycare center on the northeast part of downtown. So when you looked at these buffers, a lot of it started to take out part of downtown. I think as the council, they were not in favor of conditional use permits, but they were in favor of buffers. When we talked to the planning commission, they were in favor of conditional use permits, but they were not fans of buffers. So throughout this process, there's just been this compromise to where we got to, you know, being in a B6 zone and having reduced buffers. That's the process in which it all played out. The other part of your packet was the highlighted ordinance in yellow that, again, more clearly kind of follows the planning commission's recommendation. In there, it talks about allowing for the sale in a downtown zone with a conditional use permit. The majority of the other portions of the ordinance are unchanged. The alternative that I'm going to suggest to you after I've spoken with Ralph is to take out conditional use and put in interim use. So on a conditional use permit, it's permanent. Once you issue that conditional use, that conditional use permit tracks with that property, and it's there for perpetuity. An interim use permit allows basically the same thing, except you can put some type of limitation on it, anywhere from a month to up to five years, and it can be renewed after five years. But it's not necessarily a permanent decision based on the council.
You could do the same with the conditional use. You can put a time limit on that, or say, like, if the business ever sells, or if there's a change in ownership of the building, you could remove the conditional use. You just have to place that as one of the conditions, so, just an idea.
Sure. So, I guess that would be my recommendation to you moving forward into Monday night. If you want to, and I'll just say this. This is where we, as a committee, kind of stalled out as well. Like, this is a natural point. It's, you know, downtown, the B6, how do we deal with parks? How do we deal with schools? I think that's where, as a committee, we were kind of grinding to a pulp as well. My suggestion to you is I would put in the word interim use for the B3 downtown zone. I would also put back in parks into the buffer zone. By adding that, it doesn't impact either of the three businesses that are currently located in the B3 zone. But on Monday night, you just have, you know, five of you have to vote on one or the other. If you don't do that, you know, you're kind of leaving the city vulnerable. But one way or the other, we have to get some type of zoning ordinance in place. And like I said, one might be viewed as a little bit more conservative, one might be viewed as a little bit more liberal, but, you know, I think we're about as close to the middle on this as we can. Like, I just don't know where else we can go as far as compromise between the two. So, with that.
Yeah, thanks, chief. I really appreciate the work you've done to try to get this to this point where council then on Monday night can ask the questions, make the discussions, and ultimately vote on the zoning ordinance for cannabis that we might, no one might love, but we can all live with. I guess that's the goal on Monday night. Thanks for helping us get there, chief.
I got a question. On the three businesses we have now, and one of the clauses was like two-hundred-and-fifty feet apart, are they two-hundred-and-fifty feet apart?
I think everybody would be two-hundred-and-fifty feet apart. The other thing I'll add to is, as you read through that statute, you know, I understand that everybody has the hope of getting a license, but we don't know. We don't control that. That's something that's controlled by the state. So somebody else could come to, or get issued a license, come to town, and basically stake their claim. So just know that, that we don't have control as a city as to who necessarily gets the license, when they get their license. And I would say it's kind of like a land rush. Whoever gets that license first, comes to town, stakes a claim, that's who's going to end up potentially operating, so.
But we do let them know where they can have their business.
Yes, we can control.
We control that part of it.
The location, hours of operation, that portion, and we can control the number of businesses. Like I said, we have to issue at least one. Through our registration process, we can issue more.
Well, I think this puts us in a good spot, not to start from the beginning, but take the information that the council and the committee has worked on, the input from the public, and make a decision.
So is there, like, because there's different, like, there's a cannabis cultivator, there's a cannabis realtor, there's a microbusiness, and there's a mezzo business. Is there, there's a different license for each of those?
Sure. So I think, if you look at a retailer, a micro, and a mezzo, I would look at them as the same, in the sense that they have a retail portion, and that's where we have to issue at least one license. So somebody can decide that they just want a retail license and have a retail establishment, and that would be fine. Somebody else could decide that they want a micro or a mezzo. That would also satisfy the retail portion of our requirement as a city.
Right. And then, it says, obviously, as you said, no fewer than one registration for every twelve-and-a-half-thousand residents. So technically, we can, reading this, we can issue as many licenses as we wish?
Yes.
And then, is there, do you know, is there a restriction, like, on the county? Because obviously, say, the simple math, the county's sixty thousand people.
Sure. So, let's say that within the county, there were six other cities that wanted to issue licenses. That would meet the requirement at the county level, and we potentially could say, well, if that's already met, we, as a city, do not have to issue licenses. So, yeah, there is a balance, and it goes both ways.
But again, the county can have as many as it wishes.
They can have as many as they wish.
Right.
All right, so we, Scott?
Thanks, Kyle. And I wanted also to thank the planning commission for the work that they did. Want to recognize also that the work that they did essentially was done in one meeting, where this was presented to them, and they did the best they could to kind of absorb it and come back with a recommendation that they did. The cannabis committee worked on this for three months and studied this in greater detail, and I think that the recommendation that the committee made was the correct one, given all of the things that you've even had to say today. And so, I'm going to still suggest that we stick with the B6 recommendation that was brought on Monday last week. If you step back and look at the history of this a little further than Kyle went back, it wasn't something, this whole issue isn't something that Fergus Falls stood up and wanted or asked for. This is something that was mandated by the state. This was pushed onto us. It wasn't something that the city was requesting. And we're doing the best we can to deal with what the state has mandated. And the reality is, the B6 zone is the compromise. We could, as an example, have gone with an industrial zone recommendation and written an ordinance into that way. But allowing this in a commercial zone, the B6 zone, I think is an appropriate compromise. There aren't any conflicts with people in a residential setting, even though B6 isn't zoned residential, neither is B3. B3 has a lot of residential apartments and places where people live downtown. That's a pretty significant conflict, as I see it. And, again, I think that the option to go with B6, that is a compromise. And I think that is the middle ground, and I think that is where we ought to settle. Again, the reality of this is, this is all about recreational use, and this is something that isn't even legal in half of the country yet. There's only twenty-four states that legalize recreational use. And even medical use is only legal in thirty-eight states. So this isn't the universal thing that everybody is clamoring for, and we don't need to be the pioneers in this. We can let some other folks make the mistakes. And I think that, I could say an awful lot more on it, but at this point, I'm going to just stick with the statement that I think B6 is the compromise we need to stick with that.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Tom, did you want to say something?
Yes. Scott, there's a lot we agree on. There's a lot we don't agree on. And I'll try to keep this brief, but, you know, what all of this comes back to, for me, is I think people acting on outdated stigmas, and somehow thinking that, you know, that cannabis users, you know, are going to lead to some decline in society. And I'll go back to the point that I always make, where I don't feel that cannabis should be regulated any differently than alcohol. I mean, you have to have a conditional use permit to open an alcohol business. You know, I mean, there's alcohol being sold downtown, you know. As far as I'm concerned, alcohol's more harmful, and there's people that are going to disagree with me on that. But if we don't have, you know, cannabis shops to draw people downtown and, you know, let that be a part of their downtown shopping experience, Alexandria's going to have them, Morehead's going to have them, Detroit Lakes is going to have them. I mean, you know, we want to be business-friendly, but is it business-friendly to not allow, you know, pick and choose what types of businesses we allow downtown? I don't think so. I mean, this, you know, the cannabis, look at in just the last, you know, few years, how many states have legalized it. And, I mean, this is the way things are going, and we can either accept that, or we can try to dig our heels in and try to stay old-fashioned and think that, you know, it's the Reefer Madness is going to take over Fergus Falls. And I just, I don't agree with it. I think that business owners should be allowed to sell cannabis products downtown. It's not going to lead to, I mean, there's all these people just have these doomsday scenarios, I think, you know, with Kyle being the Antichrist for allowing, you know, a group of people to gather and to enjoy a common interest and not even partake in that common interest. I mean, I think it's old-fashioned. I think it's, I've heard from people telling me it's backwards, and I don't support not allowing businesses to sell it downtown. I would entertain the conditional use permit notion, but I just, I think that we just need to accept what's coming.
Thanks, Tom, and thanks, Scott. Thanks, both of you, and I appreciate that. You can disagree with, without being disagreeable, and we can hopefully carry that over to Monday night. I think the chief has put us in a good position to have the information we need to make that decision on Monday night, so. Scott, one question. Does Morehead, or Alec, or DL have it downtown?
That's part of the other problem. You know, a lot of this was supposed to be done by the Office of Cannabis Management. They haven't done nearly the work that they promised that they would. They haven't done nearly the work that they promised that they would. So a lot of places, I think a lot of places are just waiting to see what happens from the Office of Cannabis Management. You know, the only city of our size in our area was Brainerd, and I think a lot of what we were recommending in our ordinance mirrored a lot of what they were doing. I just can't give you, just because not everyone uses the same terminology for, like, their downtown zone or whatever, I can't give you that answer on where Brainerd was at, but I think a lot of the other parts mirror pretty closely.
I think that's a good question, though, Al. We should, hopefully, maybe try to get that information for Monday night.
I think I, you know, I think the compromise, I think, you know, we, we do have a Planning Commission, and we, you know, we engage them to kind of have input, and I think that the conditional use permit type approach was, is, is a good compromise, because that still means that it will come back, you know, again, through, through the council, and, you know, there would be the, the ability to put in, obviously, conditions. And then, if obviously a business, you know, fails to meet those conditions, then we have a, obviously, an ability to, to address it. So, I think whether we like it or not, you know, cannabis will get brought to physically downtown. We're not going to, you know, you know, unless you put a barrier up around downtown and you start stopping every vehicle and checking out the cannabis, it's going to end up in downtown Fergus Falls. You know, so we can, to a certain extent, we can address that and accept it. If we accept it's going to be there, and we put in some control methods, then I think that we have a better chance of doing just that. If, if we try to exclude it, if we're not going to, we're not gonna win that battle, we're not gonna be successful. It, it will come down, downtown. I mean, you, you only have to look at, you know, look at the liquor store sales between the west and downtown. A bulk of the liquor store sales happen, obviously, in, in that store, the west, west mall, but mostly it gets consumed within kind of like the center of Fergus Falls. So I think, you know, I think the compromise is a good one with conditional use.
I just wanna clarify, are we sticking with conditional use, or do you want the interim? Just that when you have...
I'll have to, I'll have to look at the difference between...
The interim is, it's a, it's up to a five-year period renewable, the conditional use, unless, like Claire said, you put those specific conditions in, could be for perpetuity.
We'll make sure that the city attorney on Monday night has the clear, clear distinction in those terms, and as we consider...
A, a, ex-use per, permit, yep.
All right, I think we're set, and well positioned for a discussion on Monday. Thank you, chief. Thanks, everyone, we'll be adjourned.